This program is brought to you by Newsworks in cooperation with the Eau Claire Area School Board.
Good evening, everyone. I will call this meeting of the Eau Claire School Board to order. Before we jump into some of the formalities, I'd like to welcome all of the members of the public that are here today on the call with us. Of course, there are a wide variety of opinions on the subject that we'll be talking about tonight, but it is a credit to our community that so many of you are willing to reach out and advocate for your children and for your thoughts on this. We thank you for the many messages we've received, and of course, we will have public comment again tonight. Maida, will you please confirm that we are in compliance with open meeting laws?
Yes, we are.
And will you conduct a roll call to verify our quorum?
Commissioner Lyons?
Here.
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
There.
Commissioner Zur?
Here.
Commissioner Bika?
Here.
Commissioner Clements?
Present.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
As those of you who are willing and able, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First, tonight, we will have our public forum. In the interest of efficiency, we have made a few changes from our regular method, the main one being each speaker tonight will have a two-minute limit to address the board. I will ask for your forbearance in advance, but I will cut you off as a speaker if you exceed the two minutes so that we can continue to move the meeting along. We only have six members of the public signed up tonight. Well, "only" is probably not the right way, but we'll go through them in order. And our first to speak tonight is Lucinda Kemet.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay.
If you could start with your, if your address and name and address too, just for our record.
Lucinda Kemet, E 4715 Queens Drive. On February 2nd, the CDC released data, Georgia's study on school spread of COVID, when community spread in their location was over 30 times greater than we now have in Eau Claire. With over 3,300 subjects in the study, 2,400 contact days, and minimal social distancing, there was only one confirmed student-to-teacher transmission and a few teacher-to-student transmissions. The state of Minnesota today announced new guidelines for opening schools suggesting that three feet of distance is okay for elementary and that we should do our best, quote, "to maintain six-foot distance at middle and high schools", effectively prioritizing getting kids in school over a strict social policy. This is in line with CDC guidelines that social distancing should be maintained, quote, "if possible". Many of our neighboring districts are also, quote, "doing their best to social distance with no negative outcome". In Eau Claire, the seven-day reported average was 10 cases per day as of today with no new deaths in two weeks. Hospital capacity is less than 5% COVID. 16% of our community have received one vaccine dose, 10% have received both. People over 60 are five times more likely to have complications from COVID, and they are largely vaccinated. Crestview and Eau Claire has been in-person five days with no shutdowns even during the fall when we had very high levels of community spread. They, quote, "do their best to maintain six feet, but kids interact normally in gym class and the building is old and small. Multiple grades play together at recess." Eau Claire contact sports have been in session all winter with no impact on A study pre-printed from Mayo in November states that with masking, there is no difference between one, three, and six-foot distance. In the past, we cleaned on Wednesdays because we had cohorts. If this passes, elementary no longer has cohorts, so no need for a cleaning day. We stayed home to protect the vulnerable. The vulnerable are now protected, thankfully. In the fall, we asked you to be ready to transition back to full-time as soon as it was safe. It is safe. Please be honest with the reasons for the shifts in
Thank you, Ms. Kemet. Next on our list is Maggie Vina-Powell.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us. I would like to start by stating my extreme disappointment that this vote is only being considered for K through 5. Although I am very grateful that they are potentially going to go back to school four days a week, all of our children need to have an increase in in-person learning. I did research this morning on 15 school districts surrounding Eau Claire, and as of April 1st, Eau Claire will be the only school district that does not have their middle and high school students back to school at least four days a week. Reviewing the statistics of our city and county and the science, there is simply no excuse left to give us parents. Total cases for just Eau Claire are 6,750 over almost 12 months now. That's 9.8% of our population of the city. Current active cases for today, all of Eau Claire County is 113. That's less than 1% of the county's population. Average cases over the past 14 days are 11. The goal of 10 has been pushed by the Health Department since fall. It's clear our kids being in school, or excuse me, it's clear our kids not being in school has now become the pandemic Eau Claire is facing, not COVID-19. Emotion and fear is not a policy fix for our children's learning. As much as it seems the City Council and the County Board, the Health Department want Eau Claire to be big city like Madison and Milwaukee, we are not, so please stop treating us like it. Please stop using our kids as political pawns and choose to do us best for them. I ask you to reconsider and allow all students to attend school four days a week starting April 5th. Our children need some normalcy in their lives, and they need to get back to learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our list is Marie Vandenberg. And if I could remind our speakers to state their name and address at the beginning of their
Hello, I'm Marie Vandenberg at 3013 Beverly Hills Drive in Eau Claire. I do not believe that healthy distances can be maintained if class size goes up from present numbers to accommodate all students four days. I currently work at Mann's Elementary School where I interact with students who do not have masks on, as many as 96 in a week, so I spend eight hours each week in the company of students who are talking and laughing and eating with their masks off. And I think the risk among them and to me and to everyone each of us touches goes up exponentially. So I would hate to see us put other people in that position. It's not just older people who have died. Children have died and many people between the age of 18 and 65. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jason Gonzalez.
Hear me?
We can now, yes.
Okay, Jason Gonzalez, 1610 Fairway Street. Thank you for allowing time for comment. In the unending stream of possible risks and effects of COVID, where are the headlines or studies that discuss high risk of spread from children to adults? I have seen the opposite, including the CDC stating kids were low-risk to spread infection to adults. My daughter's school has been open full-time all year. They haven't even had a case. We would like to have the option to have her back in public school as we had originally planned. According to DHS, still no child has died from COVID in Wisconsin. Oh, I'm not sure what that previous caller was referring to. If you are between 60 and 65 years old, you have roughly a 5% chance of being hospitalized if infected. And what percentage of teachers is that? And if you're between 40 and 50, you have a 2% chance of being hospitalized if infected. Those are right from DHS. How much more data do we need? Cases continue to drop below the stated emergency threshold level even without much vaccination, without lockdowns even in winter. We have real data, and every prediction so far has been wrong, so what are we still talking about? When has zero risk been a realistic goal? When we walk downstairs, get in a car, or let our kids go outside and play? Various mitigation strategies have been employed around the country with similar results. California, Florida, and Wisconsin all had close to one out of 1,000 people die from COVID over the past year. Quote, "Asymptomatic spread is never the driver of an infectious respiratory pandemic",
I'm sorry, Mr. Gonzalez, that's your time. I thank you for your input tonight. Next on our list to speak is Valerie Lane.
Have that in place. Can you hear me?
I think we just could just now, Ms. Lane. Thank you.
Oh, okay, sorry. Valerie Lane, 530 Hobart Street. I was just saying that I appreciate the restrictions that have been in place thus far. I work at the hospital and have seen firsthand how devastating this virus can be. I was working at the hospital through the height of the local pandemic. And I think it's still very important to keep the teachers and faculty in mind. I think it would be beneficial to potentially wait until teachers are able to be vaccinated prior to bringing students back full-time for the teacher's safety. And also, I think there are logistical things to keep in mind, such as the lack of before and after-school care options. Those are no longer available for people that have, my student is in kindergarten, and there aren't any before-after-school programs available for him. And kids can't be dropped off at school early, so that can be very challenging for families who are trying to adjust schedules to kind of work with the changes that are going on. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final public comment tonight comes from Mark Goings.
Um, excuse me. Um, thank you, board members. My name is Mark Goings. I live at E 17450 County Road D in Augusta. And tonight, I'm speaking as the president of the Eau Claire Association Educators. This has been a monumental year. It has tested us as parents, as community, and as staff. There is no right decision when facing a pandemic. However, there are well-thought-out plans for ways forward. Through sound planning, our health and safety protocols have served us well throughout the year. If the proposed change to K-5 instruction passes tonight, what modifications to our health and safety protocols must occur so that our students and staff are safe? Likewise, transitioning the instructional model for thousands of elementary students will take time. To meet the April 5th start date, an immense amount of logistical work will need to occur behind the scenes. Staff who are already working full-time will need to modify schedules and pacing guides, rearrange classrooms, rewrite IEPs, and ensure adequate materials are available. When cohorts combine and students return, we will need to build community and re-establish routines and protocols. I ask that the board and the district support our educators by providing the time needed in the transition effort. Tonight's proposal, if passed, would bring about a lot of change within the entire school system. While I respect the proposal before the board tonight, we also must recognize there is still much to figure out. Let's recommit to including student, teacher, and family voices as we work our way through the pandemic. Best wishes to the board and the citizens of the greater Eau Claire community. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes tonight's public forum. Our next agenda item is a presentation from the executive team on the proposed instructional model shift. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Johnson and the rest of the executive team.
Good evening, Chair Nordine, board members, and executive team members. Tonight, the district administration executive team will present data and information regarding a recommendation for board proposal, or for board approval, I'm sorry, at the end of this meeting, following questions from the board. Administration has closely followed the parameters presented and posted in October for our instructional learning model decision-making process documents. It was updated in November to reflect the short-term 100% virtual model shift for all learners from November 30th to December 8th, as staff quarantine data warranted such a decision. While district and school administration has discussed this possibility since we determined our learning model in July, planned and implemented in August and September, the impact of the virus in November and December was most concerning to us. However, with the improving data in the community and district, coupled with the opportunity of a vaccine for staff, we've begun to meet in smaller system leader groups in late January through mid-February. We utilize protocols and situations with our system leaders in seven separate sessions and most recently completed this with our ECA leadership team and family advisory committee. Many of these people have participated on our reopening of school task force in the spring and summer of 2020. Furthermore, we have continually consulted with our regional medical experts, the Eau Claire City County Health Department, and finally sought input from our staff in a survey.
Good evening. With the instructional model decision-making framework, the first question that we are to ask is, what is the level of the activity within the county? On the top of this slide, you can see the four boxes from the flow chart. Below is the data from the county dated February 17th, 2021. Although the county shows many metrics, although the county shows many metrics, you can see that the first indicator here is case activity level. This measures the number of cases per 100,000 people in the county. Although the number of cases we're seeing in Eau Claire County has certainly declined, we are still considered to have high activity and to be on a level three in our flow chart. While the previous data was county-wide, this data illustrates the number of ECASD staff and students who were either COVID-positive this year or quarantined. This graph on the left shows staff cases in blue and student cases in orange. It illustrates the slow climb over the fall and the large spike in November. Looking at the data for the week of February 7th through the 13th, you can see that our case level now mirrors that of early fall. The quarantine data on the right has very similar trends. Again, you can see the fall climb, the spike in November where over 800 students were quarantined, and then the lower levels after Thanksgiving break. Again, the current levels are closer to what we experienced in the fall. Student quarantines are a hardship for families. When discussing possible model changes with families, they emphasize, whatever you do, just please don't make us quarantine our students. Breaking the data down by school, you can see here the number of positive cases this school year at each of our facilities. The blue area indicates the number of staff who've had COVID this year, and the orange indicates the number of students. This year, we've had 125 of our staff become COVID-positive. 383 students have been positive over the course of the year. 228 at secondary and 154 at K through 5.
The symbol, is there a staffing shortage, is the reasoning why we went 100% virtual from November 30th to December 8th. For comparison's sake, early in November, we had 112 quarantined staff in one day as we approached Thanksgiving. Every day, we were determining who was in front of students when we were short substitutes. We had help from other departments in the same school, other schools helped, and even district office. This shows points in time in December and January where we were relieved to see the reduction in staff absence of student COVID. On this slide, there are a couple of things noteworthy here. We're so glad the activity has dropped per staff on quarantine since January. The top graph on the slide is from the previous one. I'd like to show what happens where we presently are. The other concern is that we still have staff quarantine, and the vast majority are in front of our kids. Each day, staff are quarantined, students are impacted. At the elementary level, up to 25 students could be impacted. When a secondary staff member is quarantined, up to 150 students could be impacted. We will continue to monitor this daily. According to the Eau Claire City County Health Department, we've had a limited number of outbreaks identified in our schools. An outbreak is defined as two or more cases that are linked by location and time. From September 2020 to February 2021, we've had four outbreaks. Typically, zero to two students are identified as close contacts for all positive cases in our schools. In general, when our students and staff who are COVID-positive are interviewed by disease investigators from the Health Department, very few cases identified as being in schools during their infectious period. This is due to the close contact tracing more of our building staff have done. We're proud of these results and success for a district our size and also due largely to our mitigation strategies. As we follow our way through the decision-making flow chart, we come to the oval at the bottom. We're continuing our preparation to add K through 5 grade-level classrooms. Our decision-making deadlines are to be completed by March 1st to change instructional models, and we are following those. We are a large system, and we had needed time to plan and subsequent ability to implement successfully following board actions. This evening, we will recommend grade levels of K-5 to begin four days a week of in-person instruction starting Monday, April 5th. The parameters of our instructional model shifter as follows. Elementary request to change the cohorts will be reviewed March 1st. We will follow our published plan on the COVID-19 website. Our model of cohort C is unaffected. Students will also be closer than six feet of distance in K-5. Elementary cohort A, B, or D students whose parents do not feel comfortable returning to a classroom for four days a week with lesser social distancing will have a choice. We will call that cohort H for home. A form will be sent later this week for families to indicate their choice. We will continue our hybrid instructional model for grades 6 through 12 until the end of the year. Our repurposed staff will remain in their current roles. Many staff have experienced those changes in the beginning of the year, and they need that consistency. Concerning the rationale, the rationale for such a change at the elementary level is as follows. Through CDC studies and research from March through December of 2020, as well as Wisconsin DHS data, we've learned that viral transmission at the elementary level is less than at the secondary level. According to the CDC's operational strategies for K-12 schools through phase mitigation, evidence from available studies suggests that the risk for viral introduction and transmission among elementary, school-aged children might be lower than that for reopening middle schools and high schools. Secondly, the impact of quarantines and exposures at the elementary level is far reduced due to the ability to engineer space and limit the movement of groups of students to one classroom. While one positive case at the elementary level could affect one or two students, the same case at the middle or high level will expose far more students because of the change of class periods, size of our schools, and the mobility of secondary-age students. There's also a risk, tremendous risk of future community spread due to the large enrollments of our secondary schools. Thirdly, the impact of more in-person learning on our youngest learners is more critical on their social, emotional, and academic growth. While we acknowledge the same in-person learning is extremely important for our secondary teams, unfortunately, virtual learning is much more difficult for our elementary students. We have also learned of many situations throughout the district where we know younger elementary students are unsupervised for the three days they are not in-person at school. Finally, a theme of consistency has begun and will continue throughout the presentation. The impact of more learning on our youngest learners is critical for their social, emotional, and intellectual growth. For our older learners at this stage of the school year, following the CDC recommendations for our hybrid model, we're confident we will be able to provide consistent programming for our secondary students as they head into the critical months, April and May. Now, this slide for the 2021 school year, what's changed and what have we learned? There have been many lessons we've learned since the pandemic hit almost one year ago. We've learned far more about the virus and its impact on our large system since the start of the school year. The positive cases and quarantines in the district have reduced to a level we have not experienced since mid-September and early October. Our community data has improved greatly, as we're able to note in examining City County Health Department's COVID website. Furthermore, we'll illustrate the ability for our staff to be vaccinated in upcoming weeks. While we have been keenly aware of the CDC and DHS correspondence, their research of viral transmission is essential. We've learned that consistency is a major component of our ability to provide a class learning environment for our students this year. While many districts have altered their instructional model numerous times for many weeks or months, we ensured students' ability to learn, even for the six virtual days in November and December. Districts larger and smaller than Eau Claire that started their school years fully virtual, with similar-sized districts reopening for the first time in late January, even in early February at the high school level. We are very proud of our consistency and will follow that at the secondary level. Yet, the immense amount of planning implementation and commitment from our staff has allowed us to keep that consistency. Difficult decisions to alter our fall activities have allowed us to keep a safe environment, ensuring our ability to keep our schools open while the virus impacted others more negatively. We were fortunate to stay open for face-to-face learning to Thanksgiving, and we also learned how the virus spread and trusted the data and our medical experts in Eau Claire City County Health. Our six-feet-of-distance kept our staff and students safe, as those partners had recommended, aligning with the CDC as well. Other districts' K-5 success was noted and influenced our decisions. Their mitigation strategies, COVID data, and class sizes interested us, and we sought more information. We knew that we were one of the few elementary schools who started a hybrid model to start the school year based on our health orders in August. Much feedback we had received over the course of the year was based on feel. There were many who felt we should be returning to school full-time in mid-October because other districts were doing it. But the medical experts predicted a spike that was occurring in the eastern part of the state that would travel to us within weeks. They were correct. They stated our schools are safe places. As long as you can staff your schools, continue to operate your hybrid model. There were also many who felt that we should close for the entire month of December into January, even through the semester. Yet the data didn't support it when we had approximately 35 to 40 quarantined staff for the first two days after we returned from 100% virtual on December 10th. We returned to our cohort model successfully. This next slide just discusses a little bit about comparable district data in elementary, especially here in the Big Rivers. Many of us have connections with their district level and school administrators. We sought their data and experiences. We're the only elementary in school to be in-person two days a week, except for our first and second graders. The others are in session for either four or five days. The next slide shows Superior and Menominee are similar to us as they have enough space to proceed at their elementary schools and keep six feet of distance. Yet they have the ability to provide four or five days a week of in-person learning for their elementary students. The others are not able to, but they've navigated these changes fairly successfully. Some have had smaller class sizes of a dozen or so as their buildings would allow them or due to declining enrollment over the years, while some others have had higher 20s in their schools. The next slide on secondary, although we're focusing on K-5 primarily, we want to share the differences between 612, especially between larger-sized districts. We know the variability between Big River Secondary Schools, but we all have different enrollments, sizes of communities, ages of buildings, sizes of classrooms, and procedures to follow at the county level. For example, Menominee has the space at their middle and high schools to allow six feet of distance. Rice Lake once had an overall capacity of over 1,100 at their high school, but now has an enrollment of over just 715 students. Superior, due to its location to a larger city like Duluth, started the year and continues in a hybrid format at the secondary level like us, following their county Health Department protocols closely. We examined districts at the secondary level outside the Big Rivers with cities smaller and larger than we were, cities with universities yet larger than riverfalls from Menominee. We researched Oshkosh, Appleton, Wausau, Stevens, Point, and La Crosse. When we analyzed the models for the other districts, also looking at CDC models for transmission to younger students, we noticed more hybrid in secondary, especially when people immediately came out of virtual learning. This is where the variables come into play. Every district is different. I briefly mentioned examples of the enrollments and functional capacities of schools beforehand. Appleton, Wausau, and La Crosse all began in a virtual model this year. Oshkosh had begun in-person and virtual through early winter and switched back in-person this week. We learned along the way that there were different county orders and expectations amongst those districts, as well as their protocols for quarantining and close-contact tracing. For most of these districts, the Board of Ed made those decisions with administrative recommendations. The only common thread I found was that each district acted differently because of those variables. Our model provided consistency throughout the high levels of the virus, which benefited our students and staff. Our secondary administrators are committed to leading our teachers in improving our present model, improving academic achievement, and creatively and flexibly designing ways to bring in more targeted groups of students for more in-person learning. We will continue to do so until the end of the school year.
Earlier, I shared that Eau Claire remains in the high-activity level. The table that you see here from the CDC recommendations for schools also places Eau Claire County within the substantial transmission level. Between February 14th and the 20th, there were 94 cases in Eau Claire County. The substantial transmission band here includes areas with 50 to 99 cases per week per 100,000 people. Following that orange column down, you can see that the CDC recommends that our elementary, middle, and high schools all remain in hybrid learning models with the required six feet of physical distance. We understand that our recommendation for elementary falls outside of the CDC recommendations. However, we have weighed the risk of the additional mitigation strategies that we're able to put in place. and are confident with our recommendation. Within the recommendation to reopen schools, the CDC emphasized schools incorporate five strategies to safely return students to in-person learning. They emphasize requiring masks and good respiratory hygiene, maintaining six feet of distance, cohorting students, incorporating hand hygiene, cleaning, disinfecting, and providing good ventilation. Our current model hits all five of these marks: every student, every grade level, every school. If we were to return students to school to four days of learning, we're confident at the elementary level that four of the five strategies could be met. Masks would still be worn. Students would still be co-horted, but not by day. They would cohort in self-contained classrooms, limiting exposure to students in other classrooms. We would incorporate good hand hygiene into the school day, and we would implement the cleaning, disinfecting, and ventilation protocols within the CDC recommendations. However, we also need to acknowledge that if any group in the district is back to school four days per week, whenever possible, we would maintain six feet of distance. But there are times when students would be closer than that. For example, students may be coddled in a classroom, being assigned with a small group that is six feet away from another small group, but the kids within that small group would be closer than six feet. Principals played an important role in examining the strengths and challenges of bringing students back to a four-day-a-week programming. For example, last week, elementary principals discussed four areas that would be impacted by the change: learning and assessment, operations, communication, and other. You can see on the samples seen on this slide that principals really examined the details around all of these areas. They brainstormed questions, they problem-solved together, and they developed a process to support the transition. Principal leadership was essential in exploring options and weighing the risk with any possible change. Additionally, 1,040 Eau Claire area school district staff responded to a survey regarding the benefits of more in-person learning, staff perception about safety, the impacts of physical distance, and the vaccine. Here, you can see data regarding our current instructional model. The dark blue and turquoise colors indicate that staff strongly agree or somewhat agree with the statement. The first question that you see on top is related to staff perception of safety while serving students in a co-horted model. You can see that over 85% of staff either strongly agree or somewhat agree with the statement. I feel safe in our current learning model. The second question on the bottom asked staff if they felt students would benefit from more in-person learning. 80% of our staff either strongly agree or somewhat agree with that statement. The second set of questions asked staff about a possible change in instructional model. The top statement said, "If students are less than six feet apart in my classroom, I could maintain six feet of social distance from them or other staff members." Looking at the dark blue and turquoise, approximately one-fourth of our staff either strongly agreed or somewhat agreed with that statement. The bottom statement asked staff to reflect on their sense of safety in a new model. It asked staff, "If students who chose in-person learning were able to attend school four to five days per week, would you feel as safe as you do in the current model?" Here, approximately one-third of our staff either strongly agreed or somewhat agreed with that statement. And the last question staff were asked was to reflect on their sense of safety post-vaccine. Approximately 75% of our staff believed we should wait until the staff are vaccinated before we allow students to attend school four to five days per week. As you know, families have also been active in the process, reaching out through Your Voice, speaking publicly, and through our Family Advisory Council. Through that feedback, several themes have emerged. Many families have asked that we increase in-person instruction at all grade levels, pre-K through 12. Families have shared the CDC reopening of school guide. Some have asked us to reopen our schools, like the title suggests. Others have thanked us for being proactive, as the current ECASD model mirrors precisely what the guide outlines for schools. Members of our Family Advisory Council asked that whichever model is developed, we consider the impact of quarantining on students and families. They asked that we avoid situations that will require more students to be quarantined. I'd like to expand on this and provide an example. Within the last week, one of our secondary schools had three positive cases. In our current model, that meant that between zero and six students were likely identified as close contacts. If secondary students were to return full-time, six feet of distance would not be possible in our classroom. In each class, students would be close to between four and six other people. Students have seven classes. Three positive students times approximately five close contacts per period times seven periods. Those three positive cases would likely have resulted in 105 students who were exposed and then quarantined, leaving their families potentially exposed as well. The model change at secondary would have resulted in 99 more students being quarantined. Quarantining secondary students in a four-day-a-week model of in-person learning in April increases the number increases the number of students in our building, leading to increased possibility of exposures that could jeopardize their ability to attend in-person learning consistently, their ability to complete their AP exams in May, to participate in graduation ceremonies, and many other events that are considered high stakes or once-in-a-lifetime events for students. Our Family Advisory Council members also shared that if in-person instruction increased, they would stand behind either four days of learning or five, whichever would support teachers in making the transition and in instructing those students who needed to learn virtually if physical distancing cannot be provided. Families also asked that we make our process clear and consistent, noting we had shared the instructional model decision-making framework earlier this year, and that it was important to follow it. They also stressed that regardless of the decision, communication to families was clear.
Back in July, you saw a slide that looks quite familiar, is this one? This has been updated to reflect the current proposal. We've received many questions about our 4K model and why that is not changed in this proposal. Our 4K model is proposed to stay the same because they are meeting the same amount of instructional minutes as they did last year. It's just in a different configuration, which is two full days a week rather than four half-days. While they do plan to go back to four half-days next year, the disruption to families and their schedules at this time doesn't warrant making that sort of change because you do not increase instructional time. Additionally, the model for K-5 adds the text there says all first and second graders. We're going to update that to really let all K through five move to a four-day-per-week model. First and second grade is already there. And then Cohort H, which we will give a little bit more detail in a moment. That's for the students whose families do not feel comfortable having them in a situation where six-foot of social distancing is not guaranteed. They do have the option for that K through five. While students in K-3, 4, and 5 are in those small sections and will allow for an increase in class size by bringing Cohorts A and B together. Students in Cohort D have already been meeting four days a week. However, if we do increase the classroom capacity at those other grades, we would do as well in for grades one and two. We do have another cohort change request that Superintendent Johnson mentioned earlier. So we could see students moving into Cohort, the traditional Cohort D, which is grades one and two, which could increase class sizes, which may have some families want to move to Cohort H. And finally, the middle and high schools, while they are not changing the instructional model of the A, B cohort system, we are looking at options for target identified students to create more in-person learning time for those at risk of being successful in their current studies. Secondary principals will be meeting regularly to work on both the identification process, how we get students to the buildings, and how we proceed to intervene. If the Board approves this instructional model, we know that some families may be uncomfortable with it and will want their students to stay home, as I mentioned. We refer to these students as joining Cohort H, H being referred to as home. If there's approval of this instructional model change, families will be sent a form asking if they want to come to school four days a week or join Cohort H. Cohort H students will join their classroom live through synchronous instruction via Microsoft Teams. We've utilized this model for quarantined students throughout the school year in most schools. We'll continue to offer professional development for our staff to learn how to effectively teach through this model. Areas of instructional focus will also be music, art, physical education programs, also known as M.A.R.E., and library media. These programs have been primarily online through the school year. If the Board approves this instructional model proposal, each building principal will work with their staff and existing resource allocations to determine how much, if any, of these programs can be delivered in person. Factors they need to consider are staff our share between buildings, how their school currently utilizes those instructional spaces, and how the building's master schedule can support a transition to in-person instruction in those areas. A concern we heard from families when we met with them last week was the testing will be occurring at the same time as instructional training takes place. Again, the question of four or five days actually coincides with this particular topic. Our plan is to bring Cohort C students into the schools for their state testing on Wednesdays beginning March 24th. If we have students in the other cohorts in there, that is contradictory to the expectation for those families of trying to isolate their students as much as possible. Additionally, students in other in-person cohorts begin their state testing no earlier than the week of April 12th. This will allow students to have at least a week to adjust to the new normal, if you will, before state testing begins for those that are in person. Finally, staff will continue to have Wednesdays through the rest of the school year to collaborate, participate in professional development, facilitate staff meetings, and conduct virtual contact time with their students. These components all remain while carrying out two full workdays in March for elementary staff. One Wednesday in March will include professional development for teachers to choose what best supports this transition, while another Wednesday will incorporate the continue of our essential learning overview sessions with teacher leadership teams. ELO work has been ongoing all year as those teacher teams continue to calibrate where learning is most essential and how they support students who have experienced learning loss during the pandemic.
Our responsibility as a district is to ensure IEPs reflect the special education services the student is receiving within their instructional model. For many students, this change in the instructional model of two to four days will cause many special education services to shift and look different than what is currently reflected in the student's IEP. IEP teams, which includes the family, will work together to determine how the student's needs will be met in the new instructional model. Updating IEPs will ensure staff and families have a clear understanding of the special education supports and services the student will receive and how free appropriate public education will be provided to the student. Shifting our model will cause our special education staff and related service providers to adjust their schedules and to accommodate for the change in instructional, universal construction, and student schedule changes. School IEP teams will collaborate with one another to ensure IEPs are implemented and the students receive the necessary supports. This type of scheduling and collaboration is common practice that occurs at any beginning of a school year, trimester, or semester change. With more students returning in person, additional staffing, for example, special education assistance, may be a need. These needs would likely reflect the recommended staff that was originally planned having been started this school year with five days of in-person learning. School teams will also review final four plans and make any adjustments necessary.
With regards to health and safety protocols, we will continue to use the CDC and Wisconsin Department of Health Services guidance with respect to mitigation strategies. Adherence to wearing masks and frequent hand washing will continue to be standard practice as for all students and staff. Contact tracing will occur to quarantine and isolate students and staff to prevent outbreaks in schools. Thorough cleanings of schools on Wednesdays and Saturdays will also continue. In addition, our schools will continue to use our district sick child guidelines to keep sick students at home to mitigate the spread of disease. As Kim shared earlier, the one mitigation strategy that we will not be able to apply consistently if we return more students to the classroom is a six-feet physical distancing of students in the classroom due to the number of students and space limitations. We know that some of our staff will begin receiving the COVID vaccine on March 1st. We continue to work with the Health Department to communicate and schedule our staff for vaccines as quickly as possible. This process, as you know, is largely dependent on the number of vaccine doses available to our county. We will also move our staff through vaccines in different waves or groups because of our capacity to cover classrooms for vaccine appointments and any rare events that are side effects to the vaccine. Within the district, we will begin vaccinating our staff with underlying health conditions and our elementary staff first. If vaccines occur as planned, most of our elementary staff will have received both doses of the vaccine by early April. We know that there are uncertainties with the new variants of COVID surfacing in the community. We do not yet know the impact of the new strains, but we'll continue to practice mitigation strategies and monitor our student and staff positive cases and quarantining data in the school district. In the event of increased levels of community transmission, we will pivot our practices as needed.
Next, for the business service information, the layout of classrooms to maximize space will need to be perfected and worked on. Custodians will work with principals and teachers to develop what the classrooms will look like. There also was a question about the M.A.R.E. ventilation rating, and all of our schools meet or exceed the minimum rating provided by the CDC. Also, looking at the amount of time to circulate, we are above the industry average. When we look at meals, we're going to have to look at what does that look like at the elementary meal, and we are working through that with the buildings and grounds and the food nutrition department right now. Moving on to staffing and human resources, staffing changes related to the potential reopening of elementary schools in which all A and B cohort students attend together would be minimal. For the most part, keep it in mind, there's always a few exceptions. Our repurposed certified staff will remain in their current positions and will not be moved back to their positions prior to being repurposed due to the instructional model staffing. The district's 100% virtual teachers or the Cohort C teachers will also remain in current positions as Cohort C students will finish out the year in the 100% virtual model. The district currently has six teachers who are split between grades. For example, in Cohort A, they might teach third grade, and in Cohort B, they teach fourth grade. They would be reassigned to one of the two grade levels. This decision would be made in conjunction with the team teachers and the principals to decide which grade they would teach. This is potentially the only situation where students would receive a new classroom teacher. Elementary staff that are not working virtually in Cohort C may have their APA request for virtual accommodation revisited, as many were granted based off the premises of a district virtual leave.
If the Board approves the change in the instructional model, we understand the importance of our communication with families. Families will want and deserve to know the rationale for change. In fact, many families have asked why four days and not five days? There are a few reasons for that. First, we will continue to use Wednesdays and Saturdays as a deep cleaning day, ensuring all surfaces are disinfected. Also, as Jim mentioned, on Wednesdays, we will incorporate testing for students who are attending school virtually this year. Some elementary staff do support both the 100% virtual model and in-person learning, and that will need to continue with this new change. So as an example, a special education teacher may need to continue to instruct in both formats. We will also have students who choose Cohort H to learn from home who will need support, and that would happen virtually on most days, but also synchronously on 1:30 to 3:30 on Wednesdays. Our staff will also, or our families will also want to know the details within the new model and what it would mean specifically for their child. The options that are available to them as a family would also need to be communicated, including attending school in person or remaining virtual. Finally, we do plan to send a form to families who are impacted, and within that form, families would indicate which option works best for each of their students.
In conclusion, administration seeks approval and recommends an instructional learning model shift from our blended model to in-person instruction four days a week for K-5 students. These students will begin attending four days a week, beginning Monday, April 5th. Before administration prepares to answer questions from the Board, I would like to introduce two special guests this evening. First, I would like to introduce Dr. Ken Johnson, Provost Chief Medical Officer and Vice President of Clinical Operations for Western Wisconsin. Secondly, I'd like to introduce Lisa Gizi, Director of the Eau Claire City County Health Department. They are present this evening, available to speak to any specific health or medical questions or concerns the Board may have. questions or concerns the board may have. I'd like to welcome both Dr. Ken Johnson and Lisa Guezi.
Good evening. I guess I'll start first. I'm Dr. Ken Johnson. I'm an emergency room physician. I currently oversee the testing, treatment, and vaccination for COVID and for taking care of COVID-related patients for Privea, and would be happy to answer any questions of a medical nature. And then, Lisa, I believe you wanted to say something as well.
Good evening, and thank you to the members of the school board for the work you're doing, and thank you to Eau Claire School District, the faculty and leadership, as well as the students and families have had a complicated year. I would share with you that what the Eau Claire Area School District has been doing to date has made a difference. That's the definition of prevention, my world in public health. We've had very few school-associated cases. We've had very low numbers of individuals that have needed to quarantine because of Eau Claire Area School District cases being in contact with students. I work with a team of health officers and directors across the state, and that is not the case in many, many, many schools across our state. We have very low numbers of close contacts from Eau Claire Area School District positive cases. As Ms. Kohler described, it's typically zero to a very small number, and in other school districts, there are many, many close contacts to a positive case. The proposal that you have in front of you does have risk, and I think you all know that. It doesn't meet the basic framework that CDC and the State Health Department, as well as our local health department, have put forward, but it does strategically and deliberately look at risk and consider ways to make sure that the environment for that K-5 group is as safe as possible. I would tell you that, yes, it's outside of guidelines, but doing this strategically and deliberately in the way that is described is really taking into consideration a broad range of mitigation strategies, weaving them together, and supporting success as best as possible. We do know from the evidence that younger students are at less risk of having COVID-19 and the serious outcomes. They also, through a lot of research and study, are less likely to spread COVID-19 and are in a situation, in an elementary school situation, that it is much easier to retain that smaller cohort that you heard Ms. Kohler speak to. So the ability to keep spread lower is much more enhanced in that environment. Eau Claire Area School District is an example of one of our largest school districts in the state, that the numbers of students in elementary classrooms, but also in your high school buildings creates an enormous challenge to meet the basic public health principles of distance as well as small cohorts. And that does create a difference in Eau Claire Area School District than in many other schools across this region and the area. With vaccine starting for educators as of March 1st, and as the vaccine supply increases in this area, we, at the Health Department, along with all of the vaccine providers in Eau Claire County, are looking at the opportunity that we have to start decreasing the risk. We do have confirmed from the state that as of March 15th, there will be a specific set aside of vaccine for educators, specifically focused on K-12 educators as well as childcare educators. In this community, we will be assuring that the use of those vaccines goes quickly into arms in this community. We've been very effective in doing that with the 65 and older population, and we are committed to doing that for the schools. And that protection will be enormously helpful in decreasing things like quarantine of teachers with close contacts. Those that are vaccinated don't need to quarantine once they are vaccinated and meet that 14-day post-vaccine, second vaccination threshold. Their need to quarantine if they come in close contact with a case is changed because of that. So we are really here to answer questions as the Health Department, as that public health entity that's responsible for working with schools to decrease risk. We are pleased that Eau Claire Area School District is walking through a deliberate and strategic plan. We acknowledge that it does not meet some of the basic requirements from CDC at this point, and we know that they are working to mitigate those risks in many, many ways that will make a difference. So I will stop, and certainly am available for questions as well.
Thank you, Superintendent Johnson. Thank you, executive team, for your presentation tonight. Welcome to Dr. Johnson and Director Guezi. Thank you for being here to fill in those questions that we might have. At this time, I will open the floor to questions and comments from board members. I've shared with the board members in preparation for this meeting that we will give each board member the floor one time in order to ask questions or make comments. After that, we will... I will ask for a motion on the recommendation as provided by the administration. I do see Zoe Wolf here joining us tonight. Zoe, you and Emery, if he is on the call as well, I have not looked through the participants' list, will also be given an opportunity to be recognized. Zoe, I can see you, so go ahead and unmute. I'm going to scroll through here. I don't think, usually Emery is audio only, but Emery, if you are on here, if you want to let Marissa know through the chat if you'd like to speak, but certainly, we welcome your comments. Again, I will recognize you one time. Once everyone has had the opportunity to share their thoughts and questions, then I will ask for a motion on this recommendation. So at this time, I welcome comments and questions from board members.
I can begin, if I'm right, with that.
Yes, thanks. Go ahead, Zoe.
Hello, everyone. I am Zoe Wolf, the student representative for North. However, I also have three younger siblings in the district, two of which are in the K-5 level. My little sister is in kindergarten, and I can tell how much she would rather be learning alongside her friends than through a screen. My brother in fifth grade feels the same as well. I'm the one at home helping them with school as my parents are at work. I have to worry about my own online work, along with checking in on them, making sure they get their homework done as well. And I know I'm not the only high schooler dealing with this issue. Sending elementary students back to school will benefit their education, along with middle and high school students, if they have younger siblings as well. Thank you for considering sending the younger students of our district back to school.
I don't have a question, but I just would, I do have a comment. I'd like to also thank our administrative team and our wider district staff, and as well as the city-county health for collaborating on sort of, you know, as we've heard Lisa reiterate a couple of times, the plan that we've come up with does stretch, at least stretch CDC guidelines, but it's an attempt to triangulate what we all want and to get to what we all want, which is in-person learning for all of our students. We all want that. I haven't heard one person who's expressed anything differently. The question is, how do we get there in a way that makes sense? As a parent and a community member and board member watching this, I'm just extremely grateful for the immense amount of work that's gone into coming up with this plan, and just wanted to say that I support it.
Well, I'll start out, and I do appreciate all of the emails that I've gotten from parents. I'm also a parent in the district, and I could read in those emails the pain especially of dual-working parents that talked about leaving their children at home and the struggles that it was, and the learning environment that kids really need. I also read, and this is really my question, one parent that wanted to have some understanding of the risk and talked about a five-point continuum of risk that is put by the CDC, and had asked if we would ask this question about the level of risk, and is it just the six feet of separation? Where do we fall within that five-point risk? And then, you know, my question is, do we have any trend data that might give us some vision down the road of the COVID numbers and where that trend data might go? Is it, you know, leveling off, or is it really dropping to a point where we might be able to get? And I'm one of those folks that really thinks that we need to get the students back in the schools, and that's all students. And is there a number or a level at which that risk becomes palatable?
So I guess I could start and then turn over to Lisa. I don't know, but I can give you a number for a risk scale. The risk really balances on two things: how much COVID is in your community at any given time, and what you're doing to mitigate the spread of that. What I've heard tonight is that the school is implementing a lot of the CDC's mitigation strategies. The one that they had a little bit of challenge on is the six-foot spacing. If you are using masks, that becomes a little bit less important. I would say, right now, the overall risk is moderate to low, but it depends on risk of what you're asking for. In terms of trend, our trend of cases has been downwards, but we're always watching, especially with new variants, of the risk that we would see another spike due to a new variant coming into the community. Lisa, I don't know if you want to add to that.
So if the commissioners would like, I can certainly do that, and I know a school district may have a response as well. I would share that of the five strategies Ms. Kohler did walk through, that six feet is the primary one that will not be adhered to with this model. The risk of that is real. Space does make a difference with this specific virus, and the reason we've had very few people out on quarantine has been because of the requirement that quarantine happen with people that are closer than six feet. So one of the changes is that with closer-than-six-feet settings in the K-5, there likely will be more individuals quarantined, and the risk of spread of disease will be there. Close contact, defined as closer-than-six-feet, does increase the risk of becoming a case. So what we say is a contact that becomes a case is significantly higher in those situations. So what you're seeing in front of you is that frame. In elementary school, the specific K-5 proposal that is being put in place, the ability to cohort students is also a critical component of that K-5 model that I see is, from a public health practitioner's standpoint, also very important to point out. That is not possible to do in the 6th through 12th grades, to my understanding, in an engineering way. So this cohort is a group of students that stays together throughout that day in closer proximity, being less of a risk for spread. The case numbers are important that we are watching, and yes, they are flattened out significantly. That is being seen across the US as well as in Wisconsin. There is considerable concern by public health experts nationally that we will see another spike, especially related to the variant strain. We do have that variant strain in Eau Claire that is being transmitted through what is not, right now, known to be a close-contact situation. So it is here, and we are watching that. The CDC recommendation for case numbers is actually 10 cases in a 14-day period for a community our size. So the 10 cases a day that was discussed, has been discussed widely in this community, is really a public health measure. That's where we can support best practice on doing disease investigation and case contact, and it's important. It does slow down spread, but the CDC measure is different than that, and that is really where mitigation strategies can be eliminated. So there are two different, really touchpoints from a public health standpoint to look at. So I would name that as an important piece of the framing of how can we move out from where we are at right now with COVID-19 strategies? The CDC model really says not until we have 10 or fewer cases in that 14-day period in Eau Claire, and we're certainly not anywhere near that.
Commissioner Lyons, before we move on to our next speaker, are there any follow-ups or any other comments that you'd like to make?
No, I appreciate the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, President Nordin. I want to thank our administration and all of the staff of the district for really executing a plan which, imperfect, has gone relatively well in terms of meeting CDC best practices and limiting spread. The way that I conceive this is it's all about our risk ecosystem and where the various risks are and evaluating those as far as what we're trying to achieve. And so there's no zero-risk scenario right now. It's a matter of how much risk are we willing to accept for what we hope we're to achieve? And I think the presentation has laid that out, given our current knowledge of COVID-19. I think the biggest questions I have, and where the friction is to be, is how our staff will be supported in the transition, and I think that was answered somewhat in the presentation, in terms of how we will make that transition happen and support them, because it will take a tremendous amount of work to make these modifications, and also how we will be able to both monitor and continue to ensure fidelity for staff and students who are going back to greater in-person time to those other precautions, since we are proposing to be compromising on one of the significant ones in terms of physical distancing. We have, clearly, we have some experience with some of our elementary students in person four days a week, but I'd like to get a little bit more explanation from the staff operationally, how that will continue to be monitored and ensured that we're adhering to that.
Commissioner Clements, I'll speak to that to start with, but I would definitely defer to others on our administrative team, probably, you know, more specifically, Kim Kohler, Jim Schmidt, maybe Mandy Van Vliet. I think the first thing I'd like to share is that throughout this process, and I guess our relationship with our staff, we have our system leaders group, and for those listening who don't know the term very well, that's a group of about 50 administrators, teacher leaders, teachers on special assignment, executive directors, directors, as one team. And I've talked about flattening the organization before, Commissioner Clements, and... And I think that's a key and, and, and one key part of that, because we have over 800 teachers, because we are keenly aware, especially at the elementary level of the, you know, that stress that they will feel. Um, they felt it all year, every teacher has, teaching in a pandemic. But here it's, it's, it's another switch. It's a transition. It's something we really need to support them on. Um, we've had meetings now, some very small meetings with, um, Mark Goings, the, uh, association president. And I think he is, he has been a good sounding work for that. He's understanding what the principals are speaking about. Um, executive directors are speaking about, um, some, also some of the activities that we're doing as well. Um, with this, we're assigning a district focus. We're assigning a school focus. We're assigning a teacher team focus. And so that way, not all the scissors are made here at the district office. So the staff have the ability to have some say in it. The schools have the ability to do so as well. Um, so I'd like to start with that. And then I, I think the last meeting that we've had, uh, we've had two meetings with the Eau Claire area, the, um, education association, their executive team, their leadership team. Number one, to share this, this news with them of this proposal that was coming forth, but also to take them through the same type of exercise that we mentioned before. So I probably spoke, uh, too long, uh, but I wanted to lay a foundation of that communication part. So then I'll defer to Kim or Jim to help with that or Mandy.
And I can help a little bit with the, how do we monitor fidelity to those other mitigation strategies? Um, if we are not able to guarantee the six feet of distance. So, um, I'll speak a little bit to that. Some of that will be things that will happen at, uh, the classroom level and at the school level. As an example today, um, I was speaking, um, with some staff and, um, we talked about universal expectations for PDIS. So really what that means is often, um, at the beginning of the school year, we really talk with students and intentionally teach students what it looks like to be part of a school community. And that certainly, that look and felt a little bit different this fall than it has, um, probably in any other year that our kids have been in school. But when we welcome kids back, uh, four days a week, that would be one of the things that we would need to do. We would need to talk with kids about what does it look like, um, when we have a classroom, um, with more students in it? And, um, what is the importance of keeping your mask on? And when will we be, um, you know, practicing our good hand hygiene and, and taking hand washing breaks and that sort of thing? So teachers will certainly be very intentional about, um, reteaching those expectations and helping kids meet those expectations at the classroom level. And then at the school level, I know that, um, this was one of the, the things that principals talked about when we met with principals to look at those four areas, learning and assessment, operations, communication and other. Um, and the mitigation strategies certainly came up as part of that operations discussion. As an example, what, what do breakfast and lunch routines look like? When we have twice as many kids in the school at that time? So, um, those are things that school by school, we will need to figure out because, um, because of the layout of the school, the number of students that we have and the number of staff that we have vary at each school. Uh, but those are certainly things that are on the minds of teachers and principals and questions right now that we have asked and things that we have, we would know moving forward that, um, we would need to examine. Um, you also asked a question, I believe, about a transition plan for staff. And so Jim would like to talk about that.
So we talked about, when we were presenting about the Wednesdays. And in, in March, we have four Wednesdays. As I mentioned, we're going to take half of those and create them as just full workdays so that staff can do whatever they need to do in terms of, um, meeting, meetings, um, physical work in their classrooms for preparation, anything that it takes to basically clear the deck so they can, they can take care of that work. Um, the, we will have one of the days where, um, professional development is part of the day. Um, and we will continue that because we know that some teachers are not quite as comfortable with the synchronous concurrent learning, as we would, I like to say, where you are teaching to a small number of students remotely. Several of our classrooms have already experienced that, but some have not. So we want to make sure that if they need assistance there or any other, um, technology or tools that, um, that will support their, their, um, their work moving forward, will provide that opportunity as well. And then, as I mentioned earlier, and I think almost one of the most critical discussions is those teacher-led teams to decide, to decide the things that are most essential and how they will assess learning loss and determine, uh, how to move forward. Because those conversations, conversations can really sharpen the focus for the rest of the year, rather than try to get, think you have to try to do everything at once in those last two months. So, um, those teacher-led teams have been very high functioning. Um, we expect that they will continue to be so and really drive the work of the, of their grade level through the rest of the year.
And if I might just add, I will also, um, back to kind of what Kim was saying earlier is that we work very closely with the city county health department, um, with any known positive COVID cases in our schools. And so between the county and between our staff and our school, we do contact tracing. And so with the contact tracing, I get a line list, um, almost daily that tells us how many students are positive in the district, as well as how many students are quarantined as a result of that positive student. So we have pre-saved data really on a daily basis of what our numbers look like. And I think those are numbers that we will be watching very carefully to monitor how it is our students and staff are doing with the larger class sizes.
Thank you. Commissioner Clements, are there any other follow-up questions or comments?
Uh, no, not at this time. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Marissa and Maida have confirmed for me that our representative from Memorial, Emory Tool, is not able to join us tonight. And so the floor is then open to Dr. Johnson, Dr. Bika or Commissioner Zer, as you would like. Go ahead, Dr. Bika. Oh, you're on mute, Dr. Bika.
Thank you. My questions have already, um, largely been addressed. I, I want to thank you not only everyone, um, Superintendent Johnson and the administrative team and guests, uh, not only for tonight's presentation, but actually for all of the data collection and communication that we've had, uh, since summer. Uh, it's been systematic, thorough, highly effective. Um, my main question, uh, was the same as my, uh, as Commissioner Clements. I identify with staff. I'm a teacher. Um, I've been in person in the classroom with large numbers of, uh, large groups of college students, large classes since, um, since the fall. I also identify as a parent, as I'm a parent of two ECASD students. And, um, so I identify, um, uh, with parents. And I have a question, uh, once, uh, question about probability. Uh, what do you feel is the likelihood that we might reconsider before the end of the school year, elementary for five days a week? And I, uh, please understand that I, I recognize all the reasons for that Wednesday, for cleaning, um, testing, meetings, uh, work, professional development and all that's needed in order to make this model work.
I guess that's something that, um, you know, internally, if that would be somewhat of a coherent governance discussion as we move along. I think, uh, I'm very concerned about, um, March and our staff's ability to, to plan for this. It's stressful. It will be stressful on them. Um, they deserve a, a break. Uh, I know many of them feel that, you know, spring break was probably more necessary than ever this year. And, you know, we want to honor that. We don't want people to feel pressured to be in their classrooms. But knowing many of the teachers in this district, that's what they do. That's just who they are. Um, April is, uh, extremely important because we're, we're measuring that, those, uh, I think we're measuring that in, in collaborating on the learning and the gaps and identifying those gaps. My biggest concern with that, Commissioner Bika, would probably be our staffing with, um, special education and the MAIT staff. Because we do need to care for those, we need to teach, we need to ensure that they learn those cohort C students. And that's a, a pretty big part of, uh, 20% of our overall enrollment. And we really need to take care of them. Um, you know, that, those are one of the things that we discussed, horrified, horrified. And, um, you know, our teachers and our principals especially are the most trusted people in the entire district. People look to their principal. When principals said that, they said for, and for those reasons, um, that really rang true with me. So I, I'd like to defer to, to anyone else who'd like to, to share on that.
I think the one other group is Cohort H. Um, now that we have a group of students that may be moving, we do not know the volume yet. And so I think if we see that volume is pretty significant, they'll need to be supported, um, on those Wednesdays as well. So, um, and, and so that was going to be for a larger period of time, um, where they, where they have that focus on them. So that will be another consideration.
Dr. Bika, do you have any additional questions or comments?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Zer or Dr. Johnson? Commissioner Zer.
Thanks. Um, I just want to start out, um, I, I want to echo, uh, Commissioner Lyons and say thank you to the countless parents and staff, um, who have reached out to us. It is incredibly valuable and I'm not always the best at responding to each of those individual emails. And I just want to say, um, we read them and we, we value them tremendously. So thank you very, very much and to all the, the, the folks who spoke at Public Comment and who have spoke at Public Comment, um, since, since last summer. Uh, it's, it's incredibly valuable and it helps us, um, gauge where we're at as a community, um, in a time where we are increasingly more isolated. So thank you very much, uh, for that. I, I also want to take a moment, um, and thank the administrative team. I, I, I mentioned this to Superintendent Johnson in a conversation that we were having. And I, I want to make sure that our directors, um, our principals hear this as well and, and all the folks who've been working, uh, on this plan and, and on all of the work that has been put in our laps with the pandemic this year. Um, I, I have no doubt that you, you are, are coming with the best of intentions for our community, for our families, for our students and for our staff. And I know that you would not bring something in front of the board and in front of the community if it was not done, uh, if, if you did not believe that it was safe and it was the best possible thing that we could do at this time. And so I, I just want to acknowledge the work, um, the, the countless hours and conversations that you have had within our community with experts and people that, um, I, I, I don't even know or, and, and, and with information that I don't pretend to have. Um, as a board member, I, I want to speak to the incredibly challenging decision that we again are here to make, um, for the second time. And, um, this always feels like I, I have, um, I teach early childhood and I have a, you know, like one, a scale in my classroom and the kids come and put various things on it. I watch them do this work and they're balancing all sorts of things. And that's all I can think about when, when we are making these decisions is we're, we're putting on stones of various weights, um, and we're going to see how it shakes out at the end. Is it going to be, um, more of a benefit to open or is it going to be more of a risk? Uh, and, um, the question that I had for Superintendent Johnson, um, and that I, and that I'm coming back to, similar to, to Commissioner Clements, is, is that risk assessment? And is it worth it? We're talking about 18 days of in-person instruction for four grade levels. And we are going to be asking a tremendous amount of our staff, as Superintendent Johnson has just said. Um, and, and with the potential that it could not work, that we would have a community health situation where we would find ourselves, not that, not that the model wouldn't work, but that we would find ourselves again faced with, um, a spike in cases, a, a increased transmission within our community, perhaps, you know, the, the, you know, the variant prevalence going up. And where would that leave us with, with doing a month worth of work to get out for four grade levels? Where would that leave us and how much work would we have to do to go back? Would, could we go back? Would we go back? Um, and so this has come down to largely four categories for me. And when it comes to our families, I feel overwhelmingly this is the right thing to do. And I feel like my question's related to our families and what it means for them. Will they have virtual or will they be able, um, to access that? They have been answered. Um, in relationship to our community, um, I just want to thank Director G C, um, and Dr. Johnson for being here to talk with us. I guess I still have a question related to community health that I would love to have answered. Um, so I guess there's two, there's two questions kind of in, in this. Is, is there a risk of the, of this changing of your assessment of, of what we are passing tonight? Um, is there, is there a potential or what would it look like if there was a community health situation where you, you suddenly said, hey, you know what, schools, we shouldn't be in the situation that we are in? And what would that recommendation look like? Um, how much time would we then have to, to pivot? Um, and, and I know that that's a lot of speculation, but I guess at what point did the community metrics, um, sort of, uh, uh, make us revisit this risk assessment that we're making? Um, when it comes so families, community, our staff, um, there's three big questions related to staff, I guess, that I, that I still have. Um, how big will our class sizes be? I know that because we've pulled some of those certified staff out of our buildings, we've, we've sort of created a void in support for some of our educators. And actually some of our teachers, because of the way the virtual, um, has shaken out and with the cohorts, they have more, when combined, their class sizes are larger than they would be in a traditional year. So I, I'm concerned about our class sizes being higher and our teachers, um, suddenly being faced with kind of overcrowded classrooms. Um, and, and what that looks like from an experience standpoint as a teacher? Um, how will they be able to handle that and what, what types of situations will we have in place to help them? Um, we've said that we would have vaccine available, but can we guarantee? I'm looking for a straight yes or no answer. Can we guarantee that staff who want vaccine will have at least one dose prior to the opening on April 5th? Um, and I have very strong concerns about staff, um, being required to teach as well. It sounded like the family advisory council did not like the idea of staff having to teach students in Cohort H simultaneously. And I know that you've said that there's been, you know, um, experience with that. Um, but I would like to know if you could please speak more to what that looks like and what alternatives could be available for teachers who do not feel with increased class sizes that they could actually reach those students, um, as well? And so I guess my last question for the administration then is, is, is it worth it? We're talking about 18 days. We're talking, you know, and I know, I, I know Superintendent Johnson, you've answered this in a, in a, you know, in conversation with me personally, but I think it would be beneficial for the public to hear, to hear that. And that's all. Sorry for all that.
No, no apologies necessary. And as always, I defer to my executive team if they, uh, you know, I took some notes, Commissioner Zer. Um, absolutely it's worth it. Um, I did get some of the same questions and concerns back on December 1st, uh, when we had gone to, um, uh, that, that 100% virtual model, when people thought, is it worth it to come back for eight face-to-face days? And, and we had navigated that very well and it was worth it. Um, you probably would assume the types of emails, phone calls I've received over the past 24 hours. Um, many of them obviously very critical. Um, but you know what? There are a few that when people talk about their children who are in kindergarten. when people talk about their children who are in kindergarten and they heard this news and they were clapping, you know, that's the kind of, I guess that's the kind of response that when it's, you know, when it's a rough day, and that's part of my job is, you know, there are no correct answers with my with my job this year, it seems like. I'm upsetting someone quite often. There are no great choices with making decisions in a pandemic. But I listen to a lot of people. And but when I hear things like that where my child is so excited to get back or when Zoe Wolf said my, you know, that this may happen, this is really exciting. Absolutely. And there have been some teachers who have reached out. And I know some are very concerned, but then there are others who are like, get them back. I can't wait. So, you know, 18 days of instruction, more instruction. From a curriculum and instruction standpoint, you know, that's that's Executive Director Schmidt's piece. You know, that's critical for elementary students to be able to learn some units, some new socio, you know, that social emotional learning, intellectual learning at the elementary level, developing those habits. And then what are we going to learn about these gaps for next year? So we can come in and feel a little bit better about where we are. So is it worth it? I say absolutely. And I wouldn't, we wouldn't be putting forth all this work at all. Did we hear that from some staff? Have we heard it from some leaders? Yeah, yes, we have. But I I think I'd like to just close right there with my comments. And and I'd, you know, like to honor and respect that time of our administrative team.
So I, Kim and I had the same conversation about is it worth it? And we were talking about how quickly in person a teacher can regroup students to do some reteaching and make some significant gains in a short amount of time. That's one of the things that's not available to us as readily in a virtual environment. So would those days make a difference? Absolutely. Especially teachers, you know, given the opportunity to be able to do that flexible grouping and have students for a longer period of time in person. Yes, absolutely. When you're, I want to rephrase the premise of your question about family advisory. I know Mandy and I looked at each other like, family advisory is concerned was please don't put our students, please don't put our students in a situation that involves more quarantine. It really, my recollection from the meeting and I, Mandy and I are kind of looking at each other was not that they have specific feedback about concurrent. The term is concurrent instruction, which is when you're teaching your group in front of you in person, you have your laptop or iPad, it is showing the whole class. And then the student that is remote is observing at the same time. Is it ideal? Absolutely not. Is this something we would promote for a full year? Nope. But the reason why we're considering this as a model is when we went into the school year, when students were being quarantined, the expectation was that they were being provided their instruction virtually, everything through Seesaw or Canvas. What our staff and our principals came up with was they decided that they would, that that wasn't enough. They wanted to provide that plus provides at least as much as they could some real-time interaction with students by live streaming. They knew it wasn't ideal, but it really was a solution that came out of the buildings. Subsequently, we also have tapped into a vendor that actually does do specific training this area to try to to realize again, this is not what we, we don't go into teaching saying concurrent instruction is what we want for long term. But if you're in that situation, how do you optimize it? And that's the step that we would be taking in the next month is try to at least provide that support. And it is for a limited period of time, not ideal. It's a solution that was born out of the buildings and the creativity of teachers and and principals. And so we're just going to leverage that given the time that we have remaining.
And Jim, if you're finished, I'll I'll take you back from there. So I would like to probably hopefully help to answer two of your questions. And then I do think you had a couple of questions probably for Lisa or Dr. Johnson. So I can pass it on to them when I'm finished. But one of them is, is it worth it? And, you know, certainly Commissioner Zer is as a teacher, especially at early childhood, you know how much a child changes in two months, especially our very young learners and how quickly they absorb information and how quickly they learn. So in the life of a young learner, two months can make quite a difference in their learning. The other thing I want to emphasize is something that Superintendent Johnson said earlier tonight. We know that we have a fair number of students at the elementary level who are home alone. And I would say that 100% absolutely in their life, this makes a difference. Being able to come to school 18 more days and not be home alone makes a difference. The other question that I heard you ask was how big will class sizes be? And that is a question, as we met with principals, that was a question that they posed. And that will be something that we will need to sort out. So we know that right now staff are serving students in two cohorts. Cohort A has a group of students and Cohort B has a group of students. If all of those students choose to come back, you know, the sum of those two cohorts would could essentially be the size of their class. We don't know how many of those students will choose to learn from home. We do know that we have some families that cannot have their child in a situation where there's not physical distancing. But we don't know how many that will be. So looking at class sizes is and class assignments is something that principals talked about. I don't have a firm answer or numbers for you tonight because we simply don't have the data on what families are choosing. But know that administrators, both at the district level and at the school level, have that very question on our radar and are in problem-solving mode around that question. So I think that answer probably is a little bit to be determined just based on the information that we need to collect yet. And then I think there were two other questions. What I had written down is the risk to the community, risk of community assessment, would that be changing? And can we guarantee a vaccine? So I will pass it off to the other.
And I'm happy to speak to that quickly just from the public health perspective. Certainly, our planning with the school districts and with all entities across Eau Claire County has really been framed by the measures that Kim had showed you earlier, those kind of red, yellow, green measures. Our move to different expectations in this community would really come with significantly changing disease rates and really the challenge to our healthcare and public health systems. Those are laid out, are available on our website. And in the end, recommendations to a specific school district around any pivot in plans are really based on their capacity to be in the model they're in. So if there are too many teachers out, too many students out, it's a shared discussion and decision between the school and the health department about that next step. The the risk with this model is that there will likely be more people quarantined with a case. And I think that is an understanding that specific risk moving forward is important. So Dr. Zhang's explanation of watching that data will be an important piece of the next number of months ahead. Certainly, if Dr. Zhang's team and our health department team are seeing an enormous increase in cases and close contacts being out with quarantine, that would definitely be a changed conversation. Related to vaccine, we have enormous capacity in Eau Claire County. We have an enormous commitment to get educators in, starting March 1st, from all of those vaccinators. Our limiting factor is vaccine. The state is very publicly saying in the last day or so that there's a push to get all educators, childcare, K-12, and higher ed vaccinated by the end of April now. That is a shift. I am fairly confident that in this community, we will have first dose into all educators that want to be vaccinated by the start of this plan. But I have to name that it is dependent on our ability to get vaccine into the community.
So I guess what I would say is I agree with everything you said, Lisa. We live in a very scary, isolating, and uncertain world right now. And it would be nice to have guarantees. But as an ER doc, where I spent most of my time in a setting where it is constantly fluid and there is a lot of uncertainty, I've learned two things. One is you have to make the best decision you can with the information you have at the time you're making the decision, but understanding that you need to keep an eye out to see if it's changing as additional information comes in. And, you know, the second thing that I've learned is there are no definitely right or wrong decisions. All you have to do is do is just work through it. Do I think that there will likely be enough for the for the educators who want to get a first dose by the time of this plan? I agree with Lisa, barring a problem with manufacturer distribution, I think it's very likely that we would be able to offer that. And I guess the last thing I would say is I appreciate the thoughtful way and the questions you guys are approaching this whole thing. And I don't envy the decision.
Commissioner Zer, do you have any additional questions or comments?
So I guess just to follow up then, understanding the the potential. And this was certainly something that, you know, we, there's been a lot of conversations behind the scenes for all of the, you know, 500 people listening. We haven't just been talking about this just tonight. There has been a lot that's been going on. And I I, you know, certainly have asked this question, and it certainly has been a sticking point in my brain of what I what I really don't want us to get ourselves into a situation of doing is gambling and then having to switch, because we can't switch back to hybrid, then having to switch to all virtual and being stuck there for an extended period of time because we don't have the capacity to move this number of people and this number of students back and forth with scheduling. And and I trust this administration. You guys have done, you guys have like made, you know, I think my grandma called like mountains out of molehills, right? You've just done tremendous things this year. And I I I give you the utmost credit for what we have managed to do. But I I guess if you could speak to what would it look like if we were to see an increased rise in community cases in the next month, two months? And we were in a situation like we were in in November and early December? What would we be looking at? Would we switch back to hybrid? Could we switch back to hybrid? Or do you foresee us being stuck in a more, you know, a few days clo or a few days virtual? How do you foresee us operating from here on out?
Well, that's that's what we've learned this whole year is to expect the unexpected. But what I have done, I I think what I and I think our leadership team would share with you, as well as you as board members are aware of this, the general public may not be, is like Dr. Johnson had said before, you know, making those decisions with the most data, but also with the right people in the room. And that's why our system leaders are so key. And sometimes we will bring smaller groups together. Part of this depends on when, part of this depends on where this spike occurs. Part of it depends on in which school. That's the the benefit with our 13 elementary schools. We knew that this year, there was a possibility of, you know what? We do have a, I would not say an outbreak, but we do have multiple cases in a in a school. You know, with 13 schools, if it hit one or two schools, we would quarantine immediately, whether it's a classroom or a grade level. And then the other 11 could could go on very well. This virus is just, it's shifted and changed. But when we meet with Privea, you know, every Thursday, when we meet with Lisa and her group weekly, you know, we're able to get those trends. And I think with with more vaccine helping, you know, that I think that would help any situation, but we would prepare for any. So if this had occurred, this were to occur in late May, would we just say, you know what, we're going, we're going to 100% virtual? If this were to occur a week or two before we started, it may be a different answer. Let's, okay, let's stick hybrid. But it depends on time, but it also depends on with the with our medical experts and with the with the county, city, county health, but also our leadership teams. And then to have those discussions as a team, because we've got some very sharp people here, we've got some very bright people with a lot of ideas. They're care, they care about their families, they care about their students, and they care about the community. So there's nothing definite, but that's what we would do, is we would have those options.
Commissioner, is there anything else?
Did you believe it? No.
For our many guests joining us tonight, we do have two Drs. Johnson on the call. At this time, I'd open the floor to our board colleague, Dr. Markwell Johnson.
Thank you. During the marathon school board session that took place on July 20th, I voted no for our current instructional model based on my thoughts on the need for more face-to-face instructional time for K-12 students and that the school environment serves as the only safe space for some of our students. More importantly, my no vote was due to the lack of logistical information that was provided regarding the proposed instructional model for both the public and our Eau Claire Area School District staff. It remains an important tenet of my role on the school board to balance public sentiments with teachers and staff's ability to deliver on public expectations. And as listening to all the information presented, we, in terms of mitigating risk, we're focusing on potentially that the compromise that will happen with this particular updated proposal of compromising physical distance. But I would also contend if those of you as we are paying attention on Slide 17 of the CDC's mitigation strategies in K-12 school learning modes for level of community, uh, community transmission. We've already violated others, other mitigation strategies. In in particular, it calls for sports and extracurricular activities with mask and physical distancing of six feet or more required if K-12 schools have opened full and in-person instruction. And for me, it also states in in multiple documents that in-person instruction should be prioritized over extracurricular activities, including sports and school events to minimize risk of transmission in schools and protect in-person learning. We've already violated as well that mitigation strategy as well. And I'm not against that. I I'm actually for a more instructional time, I'm for extracurricular activities. But once again, mitigate, those are multiple mitigation risks that have already taken place. My 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 true concerns about this particular proposal and the things that are discussed is not the lack of acknowledgement, but the severity of acknowledgement that disruption of learning for students and disruption of the teaching ability of teachers will happen. And I I I guess I don't agree with some of the comments that we can actually put a timeframe on how how long it will take to actually mitigate the disruption of learning for students as well as disruption of teaching. I had a, I had the great opportunity to be able to get out into the school districts and visit 10 schools through the month of January. And I will try to finish up my visits at the remaining elementary schools throughout the year. But one of the couple of things that actually stood out to me as I had an opportunity to speak with building leaders, teachers, and even have conversations with some of the elementary students, as it pertains to teachers, workload, morale, and expectations were already a huge burden. In this model that's being presented, I see no mitigation of the additional load that our teachers will actually bear to actually accomplish anything. And one of the things that speaks to, and it was interesting talking to some of the elementary kids, and we talk about it, and the same thing for my own elementary child in my own household, was the the attention and the lack of behavioral disruption due to the current cohort size model. And we should not fool ourselves that a larger cohort size. Once again, I'm for more face-to-face instruction, but the behavioral aspect will be a disruption to learning, coupled with the expectations of continuing the high-stakes learning that will follow itself in in April. And also, one of the things that was knowledge in some of our older, older buildings And also, one of the things that was knowledge in some of our older, older buildings that with the smaller cohort sizes to allow for the six-foot distancing, to get additional 10 or 15 desks in a class for, for a teacher, and then to expect that particular teacher to be with that cohort, that larger cohort of students for an entire day with very minimum breaks, that's, 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 that's a huge ask for, 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 for our educators. And then, you know, there's other logistical and implementation concerns that I have. I, I, I would argue with the executive team, I, I, I think there needs to be more reimagining with win stakes. Because the timeframe that you, you've included, that's not enough timeframe for actually our elementary education teachers to, to, to prepare for, for this. I, for me, there also has to be a reimagining that, and for the principal, elementary school principals who potentially are on this call, I, I ask that you really reimagine the operations within that, that building that allows for those classroom teachers who are with these larger cohorts now, if this model passed, that they are provided additional breaks, additional opportunities for preparation besides what has been presented to us this evening. Also, one of the things that I, I asked a lot of principals when I was out visiting is despite us meeting the minimum requirements for, for ventilation, we have to reimagine and, and weigh it against our safety protocols. But when, when weather permits and allows, we need to actually maximize the utilization of just opening up the windows to our classroom. And so I, I, I will conclude for me, at the end of this, however this vote goes, I, I would request from the executive team and with feedback actually from our, our teachers and staff, that we have a commitment of resources for an enriched and expanded summer school offering for all Eau Claire Area School District students. The disruption of learning i- i- is real. Learning didn't happen for some. This particular proposal, I guess for me, addresses the, the idea allowing some of our students at the elementary level to have a safe space. But I'm not naive enough to actually believe that the learning that as parents we expect and the learning that teachers who are putting in the hard work will, will, will happen with this particular model. And it may, and there can be the argument made that it didn't happen in our current model as well. But I, I ask for that commitment of resources for enriched and expanded summer school offering for Eau Claire's. At the secondary level, and once again, I will state, I, I'm, I'm supportive of more instructional, face-to-face learning for all levels, and I understand the, the information that was presented here. At the secondary level, increased efforts, it was good to hear, increased efforts to identify and assist those students who have been disengaged from the learning experience this entire academic year. And then additional support for students impacted by mental health brought on by the pandemic experience, not only for the remainder of this year, but at the beginning of actually the next school year. And finally, I, I also request that efforts are made to allow graduating seniors and eighth graders the opportunity to experience time together as an entire class during the last month or months of the academic year for some semblance of a typical transition period to the next big stage of, of their lives, transitioning on to college and whatever, or transitioning to the high school. And lastly, from a, from a personal and professional level, the huge professional expectations of our, of our teachers and supporting staff that work specifically with students with disabilities. We were already short-staffed as it relates to SEAs in our particular district. Adding more days, adjustments to IEPs and our Section 504 plan increases actually the, the expectations on, on those individuals. And I, I ask that we really do a better job. And, and for me, there is just so many questions that could be asked, but I will not ask them, given the, you know, the urgency and need to actually get this done. But I just wanted that opportunity actually to provide those comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. I want to echo Dr. Bika's gratitude to the administrative team, to our principals, and to our teachers, and to our families who have participated in working through these issues. I want to also thank you, my colleagues, for your thoughtful questions. One benefit to going last is that many of the things that I have questions, you've already asked for me. Commissioner Zur at one point asked me, do you ever have any questions? And I was able to tell her, well, everyone asks them for me, so I appear not to. And I'm thankful for that. I think one of the things, and I'll get back to my thanks because I think that's the biggest thing. One of the things that I want to speak to is we understand that there is a wide range of opinions. You actually heard, you know, some of our board members with varying opinions on more or less and the risk mitigation. We received a number of comments that suggested that board members, that administrators, and that teachers do not take seriously or prioritize the learning and well-being of our students. And while I appreciate feedback from the community, and it is a part of the job to receive criticism, and sometimes that criticism is earned, tonight and every day in our district proves that there's not a single person involved with the Eau Claire Area School District that is not putting children first. We may not agree on what the best way to get there is, and I said it in the summer when we decided on this instructional model, there is not a good answer. No one is going to walk away from tonight's meeting and say, we did it, we perfected learning in the age of COVID, because we aren't going to do it. But for those of you that think that anyone in this district goes to work or comes to a board meeting without the number one priority being the well-being of our students, and you heard it in Dr. Johnson's comments just a minute ago, the passion for prioritizing our students' learning and our staff's safety, and the way that, and because it's supporting our staff actually benefits our students. That's the thing I want to, I will push back on the, on the public for, because we're all out here giving every bit that we can to our students. And I am very thankful, again, Superintendent Johnson, I have told you this leading up to this, your work and the work of your team has been spectacular. We received a number of questions, and almost every single one, I was able to read and say, I have heard a potential answer for this. I have heard the thoughtfulness that's going into it. Or I have heard, we know that we need to work this out. That's gratifying to know that these things are not being laid aside, that the concerns of our staff are not being laid aside, that the concerns of the board and the public are not being laid aside, but instead are being considered. That is what we need to do. We may not get to an answer that appeals to every single person in our district, but that we're thinking about it, that we're weighing it, is important. I'm thankful, again, to the work that you've done. I'm thankful to our teachers and our administrators at all levels. Thank you, Director Giese and Dr. Johnson, for your health expertise and the way that you've worked in this community over time. These are not easy decisions, but I am proud to stand with Eau Claire Area School District in helping to make them. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve the district's recommendation. And a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will call the question. Maida, if you would please give us a roll call vote for clarity for our 500 or so participants.
Yes. Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Commissioner Nordean?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passed. The district's recommendation is approved. Just for clarity, can someone please repeat who was, Marissa is asking me, who was the motion and second? I think she missed the motion. I thought Commissioner Lyons, I believe you were the second.
Commissioner Harder.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda for the night. Thank you once again to the, to everyone who has participated, whether as a panelist tonight, or those of you from the public who have joined us. I will now hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second. Thank you, Commissioner Harder. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Our next regular board meeting will be Monday. Board members, we will start at 6:00 PM with a closed session. Our open session will begin at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.